Okay. Welcome to the Richmond Board of Education Public Meeting. The Richmond Board of Education acknowledges and thanks the first people of the Hongkamunum Language Group on whose traditional and unceded territories we teach, learn, and live. And recognition of visitors, we have one, the President of the Richmond Teachers Association, Ms. Baverstock, so welcome. And do trustees have any announcements to share? Trustee Wong.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Foster Family Month, October is the Foster Family Month in B.C., a time to recognize foster caregivers throughout the province who provide nurturing, safe, inclusive, and understanding home for children and youth in need in difficult circumstances where it's not possible for a child or youth to be with family. The care of foster parents in crucial foster caregiver takes times, effort, and patience, but most of all, it takes a desire to make a difference in the life of a child or youth. Thank you to all Richmond foster families for their commitment in supporting children and youth in their care. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Wong, and yes, our foster families are very important. And Trustee Belisa.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Support Staff Recognition Day. On November 5th, 2023, the Richmond School District recognizes the effort and contribution made by its support staff throughout the year. More than 1,000 support staff roles operate within our district, and all of these individuals play a part in the success of our school system. On behalf of the Board of Education, I would like to express my gratitude to all our support staff who helped to make Richmond School District the best place to learn and live. Thank you.
And I will ask our Secretary Treasurer if there are any materials that are not included in the packages.
Yeah, thank you, Chairperson. All materials have been made available to the public on the district's website.
Thank you. Adoption of the agenda, is there anything to add to the agenda? I'm looking for a mover and a seconder. Trustee Yang and Trustee Larson, all those in favor? None opposed? The motion is carried. There are no presentations or briefs or special recognitions. It's a time for questions from the public. Any questions from the public? Good evening.
Good evening, Liz Baverstock, President Richmond Teachers Association, and good to be here tonight. All right. Good, thank you. So I've got a couple of questions, and perhaps they can be answered later on, looking at the agenda, specifically on the enrollment update. So with the enrollment update, obviously, this is a good news story. It is good news, increased enrollment. The challenge, of course, is it's significant in terms of, yeah, we're above projections. This is the second year in a row. It's not something that we were used to because we'd forgotten this. I can remember in my career that this was really the normal. This is what happened in the first stages of my career. I'm probably dating myself now. So growth is great. What I want to reflect upon, and there are a couple of things I want to leave for the Board, is the theme for World Teachers Day, "The Teachers We Need for the Education We Want." And this is really the challenge that I see ahead and continuing for us. So one of the questions that I'm leaving for this report is just, when you're reflecting upon this more money, and it means more teachers, more staff in general, but for me, it's the teachers, so I'll be asking just how much of this has already been staffed versus how much staffing is to come? My assumption is that the enrolling has been staffed. That's sort of regular and routine. As students arrive over summer and into September, divisions and blocks are added. I think it's more about the specialist teachers, especially those teachers who are supporting our ELL learners in elementary and our learners with diverse abilities and disabilities. So that's one of my questions for the Board. What I leave you with is really a request that perhaps to try and set up another MP MLA meeting, and maybe you've already talked about this, really asking them for support on how do we plan for this? And then the other question that I'm going to leave you with, is there anything that we could do within district internally if this is going to be our new normal so that we can prepare for that? So I'll leave you with that to reflect on. Thank you.
Very much for your questions, and yes, we are in the works of setting up something with our MLAs.
Great, thanks.
And I don't know if there's any questions online. No? Thank you. All right. I'm seeing no more questions. We will move forward with our executive report, and Ms. Li, same.
Well, thank you very much, Chairperson. It's the executive report. It's an opportunity to highlight key components of the Board's strategic priorities. As this is our second board meeting, I would like to highlight strategic priority number two, equity and inclusion. And a key goal in that priority, related to that priority, is our commitment as a district to ensure learning environments are equitable and inclusive for all. In the video that you're about to see tonight, we have an opportunity to explore one of the pillars of our district's strategic plan, as I indicated, which is the equity and inclusion. The centerpiece of this video is a wonderful new mural at Mitchell Elementary School. Art, as we know, possesses a remarkable capacity, a remarkable capacity to identify. For my apologies, art, as we know, possesses a remarkable capacity to convey profound messages. It is an outlet for creativity through which we can express our commitment to creating equitable and inclusive learning environments in all our schools and workplaces. Throughout the creation of this mural that you're about to see in the video, our students shared ideas about what makes them unique. They shared ideas about places that make them feel safe and about things they are curious about. Their voices played an essential role in shaping this project. The artwork itself beautifully represents our students' passions, creativity, and connection to the natural world. Through its vivid imagery and meaningful symbols, it serves as a visual celebration of both unity and individuality. As a district, we are committed to providing learning environments where everyone feels safe, valued, and respected. This mural is a testament to that commitment. It reminds us that through heart, we can connect, celebrate diversity, and create a more inclusive educational community. Before I share the video, I want to express my sincere gratitude to everyone who contributed to making this presentation. Special thanks to district staff, including Mr. Plum, Mrs. Lee, Madame Carey, and Mr. Nabet, as well as our students. Yasmin, or Yasin, Ben, Isaac, Idrana, and Katar. Present. Project. So at this time, I love, I will invite you, as we explore, in this form of this vibrant mural echoes our district's commitment to equity and inclusion. I will invite you to view the video at this time.
It's like good to just like see the mural because like this is what represents our school.
I think it means that everyone is different and unique.
I just think about the school and our diversity.
I had seen a few other schools around Richmond with these beautiful murals, and we thought this would be a great way to add to our school community here. We decided to apply for the grant just to build more community here at the school after coming out of COVID and the seismic upgrade. Once the artist was selected, he came and for my class, he had come in and spoke to them and gone through the process of how he does a mural. The kids wrote or could draw ideas of things that made them unique, places that made them feel safe, and things that they were curious and wanted to learn more about. And he then took all those ideas back and created our mural.
The artist came to the class, and then he gave us papers. So he took the ideas from the piece of paper and he combined it into a big picture.
I think that's a great idea because it gets you to know the children's perspective and know what they like, so. And if someone's being asked that they feel more seen and heard.
Yeah, students feel like also have really good ideas, too. Those drawings like represent our school.
I think it's very representing to everything about this school, and I have a feeling that it makes them feel more safe.
So I think it means that everyone is different and unique and that everyone like is welcome here.
I just think about the school and our diversity. I see the mural I pass by when I'm driving to school. I think about like other peoples in our communities, diversity. Not everybody's would be exactly same. Some people has different body shapes, some people has different hair, some people have different skin tone, some people have different likings. It tells you that Mitchell is a safe and respectful community, and it's happy to have you there.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair.
Video and timely about, you know, safe spaces and safe and inclusive spaces. So do trustees have any questions for the superintendent? That's fantastic. I just wondered, are we putting these videos on our website? Are we gonna? Okay, because it would be nice for everyone to be able to see that. And students spoke so eloquently. It's amazing. Thank you. Okay, is that?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. That's my report.
I always love to see the artwork, and many schools have, you know, murals outside their schools that are meaningful to their school and remind the public to go and take a look at some of these things because sometimes I ask, I ask people if they've seen them, and they say, no. I say, well, it's right there on the wall, big. Have a look. So, thank you. Okay, so I'll move towards approval of the minutes of prior meetings. There is on page seven, a record of an in-camera meeting of the Board held Wednesday, September 27th. And there's the minutes from a regular meeting of the Board held Wednesday, September 27th. That was a public meeting for approval, and I'm looking for a motion to approve Trustee Wong and Trustee Hamaguchi. All those in favor? Business arising from the minutes, and we have actually a kind of a positive enrollment update from our Deputy Superintendent, Mr. Rick. And that's on page 17.
Thank you, Chairperson. So as you mentioned, really good news. I'll walk you through this brief report. So the purpose of the report is to provide an update on total FTE equivalent enrollment for K-12 and comparing the funding implications of actual data to projections included in the 2023-2024 spring budget. You'll notice the chart identifies all of the funded categories, and in the vast majority of cases, those are numbers that exceed projection. And if you were to look at the totals that are listed for all of the funded categories, international education and continuing education, we're looking at a increase of approximately $8 million beyond our budget projections. And these numbers were submitted as is required by the Ministry of Education and Childcare after September 30th, and we can anticipate the operating grant recalculation in mid-December. We expect that the increased revenue will be fully utilized to create additional teaching positions in line with the collective agreement to support enrollment growth as well as additional staff positions to provide classroom support to students with unique needs. This funding increase will also address inflation-related costs increases, including employee benefit expenses, services, and supplies, as well as an increased cost to operate international education. Final adjustments to revenue and expenses will be reflected in the 23-24 amended annual budget. So with that, great news, approximately $8 million, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Do trustees have any questions on their report? See, Hamaguchi.
You know, years ago, we used to talk about projections. We talked about a very small amount over the next four or five years, whatever. This seems to have leapfrogged over that, right? I think it's great news and everything. In terms of our projections, though, is there anything that we can look at in this last little bit here to help us so that in the future, you know, we're closer with our projections? Or were there just some extending circumstances or things out of the blue that happened that were anomalies that explain the big jump?
Yes, through the chair, maybe I can ask our Secretary Treasurer to comment on the question. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And through the chair, thank you, Trustee Hamaguchi, for that question. So every year, our planning department do the projection using the previous year's actual enrollment and also incorporating the new developments that's happening in the city enrichment as well as immigration trends. So what happened over the last couple of years is after COVID, that there's an increase of international immigration and also interprovincial migration. This is happening across B.C. and also in our neighboring province, Alberta, as well. Those two provinces have seen the significant increase. Total population increase has been 3% in B.C., and the student population growth in the lower mainland has been 4% this year and last year. So it is a bit of an anomaly. However, this trend, we will continue to see this trend happening over the next few years because of the shift, the federal government's shift in the immigration policy. So with last year, we had a 4% increase, this year, 4% increase, and that's consistent across Metro. Surrey, Landley, Vancouver also had a similar increase around 4%. So yes, with these two years of historical data, we will be able to adjust our provincial, adjust our district's enrollment model. So for next years, if this trend continue, if we expect the trends to continue, we were very likely to increase our projections so that closer to the actuals. But it's, you know, we do our projections in December, projecting for the actual growth in September, so it is a bit of guessing game.
For sure. You know, and I guess, you know, what we don't want to happen is to have a big projection and then get a big decrease in actual numbers. So just sort of looking at ways to make sure that, you know, our predicting, like I say, it is looking into the crystal ball and everything, but.
Yeah, exactly. And as you know, our past practice has been, our past practice has been in the budget process. We want to be a little bit cautious, a little bit conservative in terms of revenue projection, right? We don't want to get ahead of ourselves too much.
For sure.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Trustee Sergeant.
Thank you very much for the report, and having gone through many, many years, I think 10 years of declining enrollment, it definitely is a good news story. And it feels good, and I know our staff tried to be as close as possible because it's difficult to play catch-up after either. But I, you know, at Metro, there were concern, Metro meeting this week, there were concerns raised about making sure that the big growth or there are students and those students need support. And so when you look at newcomers to our country, that comes with not only supports for the classroom, but also supports in the community. And those big numbers are going to be really taxing to both those places. And I know we all want to make sure our ELL students are supported the best, the very best we can. With recruitment and retention issues, I know our staff are looking for ways of making sure that we can do that. But I do think perhaps this is also a discussion for our city, city parts, maybe council board again, just to give them an enrollment update and to say that their supports for newcomers also needs to be taken into account. Those are big jumps for them as well, and also our special needs students, you know, making sure. So I know it's a very, it's a celebratory time, but it's also a very taxing time for staff. So if there's anything we can do in the, I can report on the day of advocacy later, but if there's anything we can do as a Board, as governors, around advocacy, I know we brought it up at Metro to say, don't forget all these things that we need to do. Please, please let us know. And I know the President of the Richmond Teachers has brought it forward as well. So if there's anything we can do jointly to just keep that up, I think is important because we all celebrate perhaps the money, but all that is really the underneath that needs to happen. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And also at Metro, you know, the issue was raised of our annual general meeting that comes up in April and the possibility of putting forward motions for advocacy to our B.C. School Trustees Association. So we should all be thinking of that as well, what can be done in that regard and possible motions. So something to think about. There any other questions? Oh, yes, I had Trustee Yang on there, and then I have Trustee Belisa, and I have a question myself.
Thank you very much, Chairperson, and thank you to the Deputy Superintendent for this report. You know, I echo everything that's been said about our increasing enrollment, certainly good news, that means operating funding for our district. What stood out to me is our English language learners. We went from our projection to actual a difference of 444. And, you know, if I did my math right here, the percentage of ELL students to the total students that we have, that's also gotten a little bump as well. So that's a trend that we continue to see in our community. I know Trustee Sergeant spoke about this earlier, but can staff at this point just share a little bit of the strategies with, just in terms of ELL recruitment and retention, how that's been going thus far?
Through the chair, I think I'll direct that question to Assistant Superintendent Stanger.
Sorry.
Free to come and join me.
And through the chair. Of course, these are extremely important positions to fill, they're specialized positions, and we have a number of processes right now underway. Our first process is to fill any position with fully qualified ELL Learning Assistant Teachers. In the absence of that, we look to what we call minimally qualified folks who have got essential coursework, but maybe not the full coursework and credentials to do the job. And in the absence of that, then we've created a category of teacher in partnership with the RTA to reach out to teachers who have some qualifications but are interested in gaining new qualifications and inviting them to work in the position to gain experience. From a recruitment perspective, we're also looking at opportunities to build in-house course learning opportunities. For example, how do we create IEPs? How do we teach level literacy? How do we differentiate a whole variety of sort of learning opportunities for people who are interested to gain the capacity to do that? That might not lead them to have university credentials, but it would allow us to have confidence that they can do the work at a skillful level here within the district, and then we would deem them qualified within the district to be able to do their, to do that work. We also look, as we're recruiting and Make-A-Future, to hire fully qualified people. We continually have Make-A-Future applications out, and we invite teachers from other districts to come. We're also providing regular learning opportunities through our Learning Services Department on around core aspects of supporting ELL learners within the classroom, and we do that in coordination with Assistant Superintendent McMillan's folks. And then I think, you know, moving forward, it's what other opportunities can we do to provide cohort learning opportunities with universities in partnership here within the district? Those are things that we're also exploring this time.
Certainly appreciate that high-level summary there, and I know that it's part of an overall issue we're dealing in terms of recruitment and retention. But nonetheless, I think I want to emphasize personally that, you know, we as a school district, we need to make sure that, you know, whether you're an ELL student, whether you're diverse, if you have an ability, our most vulnerable students, to make sure that they're well taken care of and have the care and education that they need. And I know that staffing is a big part of that solution, right? Yeah, and we just have to make sure that no child like those are left behind in our district. I know that there will be opportunities coming up. There will be opportunities to bring issues to the table, our senior government. And so if this warrants further advocacy, I'm certainly in support of that. Appreciate the comments and the.
I think I have to have Belisa on the left.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for this report. It's good news that the enrollment is rising again. But I know along with the increase in enrollment, there will also be increase in the needs of the students, especially the spatial needs students. And there is, there will always be implication on the staffing allocation and in the school capacity, which provide and deliver this educational program. Now, I know that would be answered sometime, you know, the complexities of the staffing allocations and how the. How the. Our staff cope with this increase and, uh, you know, shortages. My question is, uh, with this, uh. Increase in enrollment, there is budgetary implications. So we, along with the increase in the needs of the students, there will be also increase. In terms of expenditure. If, I'd like to see the financial picture after said and done. You know, we have almost eight thousand and how much are we going to incorporate? Would, 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 should, are we going to be? Seeing some kind of nega- negative or positive impact on our. Budgetary allocation. Thank you.
Uh, sure. Through the chair. Thank you, trustee Belisa, for that question. Uh, as uh, as demonstrated in uh, our Deputy Superintendent's report. Uh, the increased revenue is projected to be around eight million dollars at this time. So that revenue, increased revenue will be entirely um, uh, expanded. Uh, to recruit teachers, EAs, and also other support staff. Uh, to, to make sure that we maintain the same level of services in our classrooms to serve our students, to meet the students' needs. And also the increased revenue will be spent on uh, cost increases such as inflationary uh, costs. That was not included in the annual budget and also um, uh, employee benefit expenses. So that, that expense has increased since, uh, since the annual budget time, since the springtime because of inflation and also. Benefit, benefit providers expenses has increased. And also, um, we, uh, within the, uh, the, the budget revenue projection. There's about one point five million dollars increase in international uh, program. Uh, with the increase of international students, the costs to run that program is also increasing. For example, the half of the revenue, uh, about half of the revenue will go to home stay. So it's a flow-through type of revenue. So with that, um, we are currently the projection, of course, this. All this information will be incorporated in our amended annual budget process, which will come to the board. Uh, we'll report to the board a little bit later in December and January and you will see the full report. And that reporter will be, uh, going through the board for bylaw approval in February.
Would there be a separate income statement for the international education program?
Um, no, not a separate statement, uh, in terms of accounting, uh, financial reporting. No, there isn't. Uh, it's just a one separate line in the income statement.
Because it's important for us, Chris, to see whether or not it is financially efficient. And profitable for the district to continue the international program.
Uh, international programs.
Educational services, of course.
Yes, absolutely. Yes. So the international program has been generating significant net revenue for the district.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, are there any other questions? I had myself on the list and. It's just a curious question about the continuing education numbers. So you had projected fifteen and actual seventeen, so. An increase in two. And I know that's small now. Are those the provincially funded students? Is that who you're including on this? Okay. So these are students such, that receive the funding. For those, for that, those courses. All right, thank you. Well, thanks for the report. I know, you know, we always have lots of questions. Um, and I might point out, Mr. trustee believes that that. Um, international education is. Is uh, coming up next on the list. So you might get your question answered. But thank you very much for the report. You know, a lot of work goes into that. Okay, so moving on, on page nineteen. Uh, our Richmond International Education Update and a report from the director. International Education, uh, Mr. Sean. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for including international education on the agenda this evening. It's always nice to be here. Um, you received our written report and I'm here to deliver the verbal report and, and take any questions you may or may not have. Um, my report just, uh, to start out is, uh, our goal was to, we. Before during the coming of the pandemic was to establish and implement a plan to sort of rebuild and, and uh, our, our program through the pandemic. Uh, I think we were able to do that uh, this year. Um, I think our, our numbers and, and uh, report reflect that, I believe. Um, by way of a simple introduction reminder, you know, our program and in the district here, international program has been. Up and running for about twenty-five years in the district. Um. Maybe we should have some kind of a celebration for that, maybe. Um, uh, and we have long-term programs, short-term programs, individual, short-term group programs. We have a summer camp. We have an after-school program for students, uh, optional program. Um, and we have professional learning programs for educators uh, around the world. And uh, we were able to uh, add, uh, uh, let's learn English, a parent program for our international student parents. And we have seventeen parents in that program right now, which is wonderful. Um, are, as far as enrollment data goes, we were able to accommodate our largest intake in decades, uh, if not largest ever. Uh, we had about a forty-three percent increase. Um, our long-term study numbers, uh, have returned to. Uh, overall to the, um, sorry, sorry, you can't hear me there, uh, our, uh, twenty nineteen pre-pandemic numbers. Um, we saw about a twenty-nine percent increase, uh, from this time last year, uh, in our student numbers. Um, so our projection three years ago, coming out of the, of the pandemic. Uh, we thought we'd be kind of around this number at the end of this year, but we are, uh, there and, uh, uh. Beyond that, exceeded our expectations already for this year. Um, or at this time, uh, now our summer camp, we were able to deliver our summer camp throughout the pandemic. Uh, this year was the first time we had, uh, uh, triple digits, about a hundred and thirty students from eight countries. Uh, which was wonderful to see, uh, all the students back at summer and, and, and that many students back. Uh, that still represents about a thirty percent, uh, total of our typical pre-pandemic summer camp, but. That's a step in the right direction, I think. I believe our short-term program, uh, overall is about forty percent of where it was pre-pandemic. And continuing to grow, uh, but there are, um, obviously some pressures there for us to, to rebound to our pre-pandemic number in our short-term program. Uh, our connections program with our students is back and running and, and doing really well and, and, uh. And great feedback there. And as I mentioned, our let's learn English, uh, program for the parents is, uh, doing really well. Our student profile, we were able to maintain our diversity that we gained through the pandemic. We've been able to sustain that. So that means we have students from about thirty different countries, uh, studying here in our district as international students. Uh, where the profile has changed significantly, uh, this year is at the elementary. So, uh, we saw about a sixty percent increase in our elementary student numbers this year so far and about fifteen for the secondary. So. Um. Uh, and our short-term programs have rebounded, uh, our, our group programs, uh, the extended group would be a month, two months and, and three months. That, that has, uh, returned. A lot of our, our programs that were coming to us on a regular basis for the pandemic. Have come back, which is wonderful. Uh, uh, that, that they have program successes. Uh, I, I think that we've been able to rebound and get back to our pre-pandemic numbers of success. Uh, I think we had our largest number of, uh, gross applications and our net applications. That means students that are actually able to get here. Uh, ever. Um, again, I mentioned our summer camp, uh, travel, international business travel is, uh, back. I was able to go to mainland China for the first time in, in four years. Um, it was wonderful, uh, to be able to travel, uh, essentially, uh, like we did pre, pre-pandemic. The positivity around Canada in general, I know that sometimes here we, we might not think that, but the positivity about Canada. And British Columbia and people who know Vancouver and Richmond is, is positive. People were so happy. To see us and the events that we would go to, they'd be our own events or visiting schools or, or whatnot was very positive. Uh, everyone was very happy, uh, to, to see us there and then, and, and excited about the potential or possibility of, of coming here as well. Uh, we've been able to continue to really leverage and use all of our, uh, the virtual, uh, communication platforms to communicate with our parents. And students and the responsible adults before they come, uh, they're committed to coming here so we can reach out and, and do our sort of orientations with them. And Q and A with them before they come a number of times. And when we get here, we may be able to, uh, enhance our parent support program. Uh, that we, we visit our schools, uh, on a regular basis to touch base with, uh, our, our educators at the schools, but also the parents. And then we enhance that with virtual, uh, sessions with our international student parents that are here, for example, to talk about, uh. For example, report cards, where are the, um, letter grades and percentages, for example, is something we could talk about, uh, on medical. Uh, uh, health, where to, to access and make sure they have their, their M S P cards and, and things like that. Um, and then general questions. So that's been really, you know, a silver lining, if I can say so, of, of, uh, of, of the, of the pandemic. Having access and being able to use our virtual communication platforms in this, in this useful and productive way. We also do, you know, traditional emails and, and we have our newsletters, uh, continue to have extremely, I think, high open rates of fifty percent. Usually up to seventy, seventy-five, eighty percent of open rates, uh, which is wonderful. Um, and that's been helpful. We had our largest new student orientation intake this year, um, by far, again, uh, probably, uh, definitely in decades, if not ever. Uh, we were able to, because we could do a lot of orientation virtually. Talk about a lot of those nitty-gritty questions and whatnot. We can spend more time reinforcing those important aspects, again, like medical and etiquette. And school and things, but also spending time and building community. And we, we got our feedback from our secondary school coordinators, uh, our first meeting this year was that they, when the, the students went to the schools for their tours. That they were already knew each other and were friendly and, and, and had, and, and felt a lot more comfortable. Uh, uh, doing the tour and, and meeting their new, new classmates, or at least the new international students. So our hope, that was what our hope was to. To be able to build that community and, and help the kids make bonds and connections before school even starts. So. Uh, at least, uh, initially that seems to have been, been a positive, um, uh, result as well. Uh, database, uh, enhancements, we were able to incorporate a vaccination, a tracking module in our database, which allows the parents to. Uh, include acts, add their vaccinations of their kids, uh, there clearly. But also more importantly, uh, it allows us to easily extract that information and share it with the authorities that need it when they need it in a simple. Or an easier way, uh, and quicker, and also allows us to minimize our environmental footprint. Where we're not having to print paper all the time or, or put things in a folder and, and, and things like that. So that's a, a, a big enhancement. We've also been able to, we had a wonderful visit from an international, uh, international school, sorry, an intermediate school in Toronga. Uh, New Zealand, it's eleven to thirteen-year-olds. Uh, they, uh, that, that city is about. Two hours southeast of Auckland, and I believe it's the, the entry point, uh, hundreds of years ago when the Maori. Uh, entered, uh, and, uh, moved to that part of the world. Uh, so they, uh, the students came and were able to share. We went to Dixon Elementary into Steeveson London. And be able to share and connect with the students at those schools. They did all sorts of, of dances and, and songs and singing. And, um, for those of you like me who love sports and might be following the Rugby World Cup. New Zealand's one of my favorite teams and I get equally inspired and intimidated by the Hakka by watching those big burly rugby players do the Hakka. Well, it was the same when these eleven to thirteen-year-olds did the Hakka at, at the school. It was amazing. Um, we were also able to, I, we asked the coastal Wolfpack, uh, First Nations, uh, organization to come and join. And they did as well and performed, uh, dances and songs and shared some traditions and stories as well. It was just a wonderful day and it's, uh, that was represented something that we were able to do more often, uh, pre-pandemic, of course. And so. Uh, it was just a wonderful, wonderful day and I'm glad, uh, the students at Dixon, K to seven, sat on the floor in the gym for about forty, fifty minutes. Thoroughly enthralled, engaged. It was, it, it was a wonderful day. Um, challenges, uh, remained, uh, and these are things, challenges that we assumed or thought might, uh, impact our, our program and our numbers moving forward. And, and they did. I, I R C C, the processing times or price, processing priorities. For the first time ever, we had about thirty students that could not get visitor visas to come for summer camp, for example. Uh, and other than one or two, it wasn't a denial. They had no feedback at all, one way or the other, requiring more information or whatnot. So. Um, we've seen a little bit of that. We've had to have a larger number of deferred students to second semester than we've ever had before. Yes, part of that's to do with our higher number as well, but the percentage of, of parents and students, for example, that have not had a response. Uh, from I R C C has definitely increased. So, so that's a challenge. The priorities are based on the other, uh, challenge that we've had. Is the geopolitics, right, related to, uh, what's going on in the world. And so some of that's related to, to that. Uh, for example, the diplomatic, um, situation we have with India has redeployed, uh, global, uh, priorities. Uh, 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 I R C C processing team globally to, uh, sort of pick up the slack and processing documentation from Indian students and applicants. So that has a, a bump on effect. Um, that's just one example. Flight availability, cost is still a problem that is starting to change. For example, I could not get a direct flight to mainland China. I had to fly indirectly both ways and the cost was significant. Uh, we've had students, again, groups from summer camp. From Japan even that, that postponed their trip because of the flight cost. So that has been a challenge, uh, for sure. Us internally, um, definitely s- school availability, space, seat availability, uh, has been obviously a challenge. We. We knew that would be, so we work closely as we always do and continue to do with, with finance and H R and, and central registration in our schools. To make sure, uh, that we know, uh, how much space we have, where it is and, and how we can ensure that we're supporting the schools and supporting the students. In, in, in the way they need to be, uh, so that we could have a vibrant and dynamic international education program. Uh, second semester will be impacted, uh, certainly, uh, related to space and availability, but. We'll continue to work with our, our colleagues and, and, and ensure we continue on in, in a positive way. Home stay availability, same thing, uh, we were able to add home stay, uh, but, uh, again, the availability of home stay, uh, at the secondary level. Remains, uh, limits our ability to welcome students to our program. Uh, so we had to, uh, uh. Close out applications for students much earlier than ever before, uh, that needed home stay. Um, and, and so that, uh, you know, we continue to move forward. We do add home stay and it's not just about adding home stay, but. Obviously the supports and trying to have the right, obviously the right environment for our students to support them while they're here. And of course, the economy, yes, inflation has, has, has gone down, but it's still a challenge. The cost of price of, of goods and services in, in, in Canada. Uh, remains a challenge and that, that, that still impacts our program. Program development, uh, moving forward, we just want to continue to. Um, you know, serve at the board's, uh, behest and deliver the type of international program that you have expectations for. Making sure that we can support the students and add value and, and, uh, to, to our school communities and the district at large. And we'll continue to, to work hard, uh, to do so. Uh, uh, we appreciate, um, the opportunity to do so. Um, we do hope to continue to grow, uh, uh, grow to, uh, at least solidify our long-term. That's still our bread and butter. Part of our program to solidify our long-term study numbers. We'd love to be able to add more of these cultural visits and. If we can, to help our students and educators to also be able to go to some of our school partners overseas to experience the same thing would be wonderful. We'd love to do that and, and continue to try to do that where and when we can. Um, and, uh, and, and continue to, uh, if not, uh, they continue to diversify our, our, our program. Uh, at, at least to, to maintain that diversity because we think obviously that's a lot of value to our, to our communities. Um, and as I, uh, end off that's my report, you know, as always, I wanted to acknowledge the, the support and the guidance received from the board. Our senior team doors were always open and wonderfully supportive. Our, our colleagues all around the district, uh, you know, H R and central registration. And, and continuing education and, um, and finance, our, our tech, tech teams, our, our work yard teams, our, our. All of our educators at the schools, our, our support staffs, um, have done, uh, are wonderful and supportive of internationals. It's just always a pleasure to work with everybody. It's easy when things are going well and it's, of course, when it's a challenge, it's equally pleasurable, uh, for us. And we really appreciate that support. I'd also like, if I may, um, and most of you, if not all of you, but most of you will. Have remembered a lot of our predecessors in our program that, that contributed to establishing and, and delivering and, and representing. Uh, the district, contributing to our district, uh, in, in so many positive ways and made my job and our job currently so easy. Uh, to be able to take over and, and have the honor of running the, uh, and trying to facilitate international education on behalf of the district. Um, I just also, so some of our predecessors, uh, are, are, are still here with us, but in, in, in retirement and others are not. And I just wanted to take a moment, if I may, to acknowledge that, uh, Richard Hudson passed away on Monday. And, uh, he, uh, was. And he was a colleague, you know, a peer. Over the years, for me, I've known him for a long time. He was a peer, a colleague, a mentor and a friend. And I really have appreciated the support that he continued to give us as well. A real supporter of the district and international education. So I I appreciate your indulgence and let me mention him today.
I think that concludes my report for the evening. Remember him and we're very sorry to hear that. He contributed hugely to the program. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, do trustees have questions? Trustee Larson?
You almost forgot. This is, I'm so impressed with where you're going and where you've come. Oh, my gosh, the fact that like professional learning, parents, after school programs. I mean, I've seen firsthand what this program does bring to our community itself. The students, the families that are around the school, the home stay families, and also the other way is it's amazing. What else did I wanted to say that I I'm, yeah. It it's the training that you're offering, the richness, like I said, the the difference that it makes in our community and in our world, really. It it's just amazing. Thank you very much. Your passion is contagious and is real and thank you.
Ken, trustee Hamaguchi.
It's amazing the way you bounced back from COVID and and so highly of your program. Is there a ceiling, like to a point where we go, geez, we can't take anymore because we don't have the space or we don't have the manpower? Like, I mean, we keep going, climbing, climbing. I always wondered, like, is there a point where we go, gee, if you go past this point, it's going to water down the program? Are we anywhere near there or can can you actually substantiate or come out with a number or?
Yeah, we certainly from our perspective, when we project outlook down the road and we do our three year rollout and what that looks like. We look at where how much space is available in the school, in the school district, at what schools, what grades there are. We look at home stay availability. We also look at how many international students at each school. You know, there's a balance there. Our our rule of thumb has always been, we want to keep it at ten percent or less at the secondary schools, for example. We want, you know, parents, international parents have options. They don't have to send their students abroad. There's international schools, for example, in their home countries. So they don't want an international school experience when they send their kids overseas, they send them for other reasons. So, yeah, certainly, we look at what the the enrollment looked like, where where the space is, how much space is available, what grades, where it is. Also, how many international students would be at a school? We want to make, as I say, make sure we have that balance. Home state or or appropriate accommodation. A lot of our international students have family, friends, acquaintances. Or sometimes the study abroad organizations have their own accommodation arrangements, things like that. So we want to maintain, obviously, not just having as many students as possible and hope for the best. Obviously, we, you know, our office, as you know, is a twenty-four seven wraparound care. We're not just a marketing promotions office and so we're mindful of all that. And so when we get together, we talk to senior team and we talk to central registration in the schools and and look at what that looks like. And, you know, how many seats are available and and where they are. And then we look at also what are the the trends or what are the pressure points? What what does it look like out there? I mean, how many students are are interested in studying abroad, say, from Chaban or South America? And and how many might be interested in coming here? And with us, we look at flights, for example, direct flights, the ease of getting study permits, for example, and we just look at all that. And 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 look at what an appropriate number would be.
Okay, so, and I'll say, you may not even be able to answer this, but if we look at, okay, what our capacity is right now, this magical number. Versus what we actually have right now. Would we say like, well, we're thirty, seventy-five percent or eighty percent of what we probably could take? And I don't want you to force out numbers because it's not there, it's not there, but is there, were we, is there any kind of indication like that?
Well, I I wouldn't have.
Like a ballpark?
I would have a hard number. We're around nine hundred, so certainly at elementary, it it's it's tight moving forward, for sure. A secondary, some of our secondary schools, same thing, but there are some secondary schools that do have capacity. That that we we can look at trying, you know, where we can maybe have some more international students there perhaps, for example, there. So I I I could, you know, happy to to really crunch the numbers.
You're too busy. I was just curious of what percentage are we operating at?
Yeah, I our our rule of thumb has always been ten percent of, sort of the secondary level, ten percent of the population would be international. And overall, at elementary, two percent. So right now, we're at an elementary at one point nine eight percent exactly. And at seven percent overall in the district secondary level. So if we, again, looking at the the trends of of the, you know, domestic students. There's also the non-fee paying international student numbers that are increasing as well and then considering that. So so I would say it's the ballpark that at least we have about a point zero two percent, maybe. Buffer at elementary and about a three percent at secondary. But that would be dependent on the discussions that we'd have with senior team and and all of our our colleagues as well.
Thanks, Sean. You you do a super job, you and your team.
Very much.
I have Dave, trustee Yang on the list.
Thank you, chairperson. Nice to see you again.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you so much for for the report. Very good news, certainly. I know that earlier you shared a little bit about your recruitment strategy. You've been traveling quite a, starting to travel again. And, you know, just communication about our our program. Were there any other recruitment strategies that you'd like to share or, you know, some successes or challenges?
Yeah, certainly, the it's, we're, it depends on where we are in the world. We're in some parts Richmond's well known and and well respected. And it's a long tradition of having students here. So it's family members, classmates or cousins and things. And 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 or certain schools and organizations that know us well. So in that case, it's a matter of of this making sure that we take care of the students, obviously, and and keep them up to date on all the new developments that are going on. Certainly our our socials, where we have pictures and I'm sorry, I I. I'm not sure we, if we don't have pictures or video of that Taronga school visit on our Instagram or whatnot, it will be soon. So our newsletters are a great way of communicating, our website. We are enhancing our website, so not just the English, but also in other languages as well. So that communication is good. And it's the ongoing communication and making sure that we're able to deliver what we're able to deliver and just maintain those relationships. So education fairs, our our consulates and embassies do a wonderful job at talking about Canada, obviously in general and education. Sometimes they sponsor events, you know, whether it's seminars or workshops or education fairs. And that's a way for us to meet people as well. So we do various things to try to let people know that we're here and if they're thinking about studying abroad, please consider Richmond, so.
That sounds very thorough and I'm sure the word is getting out there and, you know, I just think you're here today. You were here same time last year, about the same time last year. And I think last year, the program was just getting ready to take off again after a tough couple of years. And it's just great to see the numbers coming back, being so strong. You know, this increase in enrollment, it really is a good sign that our public education system, like like you said. Is still attractive globally and we're still highly highly regarded, right, in the international community. Despite all the challenges we've seen a couple of years, whether that's discourse, whether that's, you know, geopolitical challenges. And you mentioned that the cost factors are still high, you know, coming from a diaspora community. We know full well. What's going on. But, you know, the world is connecting again, right?
Yes.
Just so happy to see that our school district is part of that connection that's thriving again. And, you know, you're you're at the forefront of that for our school district. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have trustee Belisa.
Thank you, Madhuri. Thank you for this report and. I appreciate and thankful for the income that we derive from this program. But I could, I would like to ask some few questions and let it be clear first that I'm not against international educational program. We know we have problems in our school district with regard to shortages, tougher locations, financial implications. Does this program take away the focus and priority? Of our district with regard to our local or domestic students in this district? And my second question would be, I know that the students come over to this country. Because they are, they gain knowledge, experience and engagement with our students and the country. Are our students here in Richmond share the same kind of. Gain that we derive the out of this program? And do these countries, you mentioned of the countries. Do they also have the same kind of reciprocal program? Towards our students and our people in Canada? And the third one would be the, you mentioned of geopolitical situation that might impact or challenge our educational program. What would this kind of situation be? Thank you.
Yeah, sure. Thank you. I think if I, the first question overall, I do believe that international education does allow us, the students pay fees. The parents stay, pay program fees, which allows us to have them here and also hire teachers and ELL support for them as well. The revenue, I know we focus a lot on revenue. It does allow the board or 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 our schools to enhance programming as well as adding staff and and ELL support and things like that. So overall, I do believe certainly on that regard that international education is the net benefit, that it benefits the district as well. You know, our local students as well. I think the second question was about that, about the the connections, what do our students derive for international, that certainly the international students. And we talk a lot about this. It's not just, you know, when they come, what they are. What they're going to get from being with us, but what they're going to contribute to our our schools and classrooms. It is a way, many of our local students, you know, it changes in time, but maybe they can't, you know, travel overseas or spend time. Studying at a in a school for overseas for a week or a month or whatnot. So it is a way for us to help bring the world, to a certain extent, into our schools and communities. And our international students bring their own histories and and traditions and worldviews and things like that to bring them in. And they have an opportunity when they, and our schools do a fabulous job, in my opinion, our educators. You know, welcoming the students when they are international students get to the school, they feel, you know, day one, they're part of the school. They feel like they can, you know, join the club or 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 contribute and and, you know, some need more time to to adjust to the to the 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 style of learning. Or or in in some cases, going from a rote, an education system or based on rote learning and and staying rooted in one class to one where it's not. You know, where the students are, their their learning is generated from their own interests and out and they move from class to class. And they have, for example, course options. In many cases, they don't. So so I I think in in that regard too, that our international students contribute contribute more than just revenue to the district. And our students, I think, overall, can derive from having that exposure and friendship. So many times, when we talk to our international students and parents about their experience. A hundred percent of the time, the kids talk about how they're wonderful, their their school was, their teachers, the friendships they made. And then they talk about their accommodated home stay or things like that. Almost never are they talking about us, of course, right? It's it's, you know, the 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 teachers and and the principal, the coordinator and the students and the friends that they make at the school. So so I think, in my opinion, that international education in the district contributes, you know, financially, but also socially and culturally. And I also, I've seen this, you know, that when the world gets complicated, you know, with COVID nineteen or with. Military and wars and things, that the value of international education is is even more pronounced and highlighted. I think it really truly does build a more peaceful, more understanding place. I've seen people that that they'd never had exposure to people from certain countries until they'd been part of our international program. I thought they they would say this, that they'd never knew that or thought that until they met that student. And now they have a broader understanding of the world or or people from that culture. So I I think it does, in in my opinion, add add value to our district in that regard as well. And I'm sorry, I think I forgot your third question.
Geopolitical situation?
Yes.
What kind of challenges are we?
Right, so cer- sorry, yep. Yeah, certainly, one example I mentioned just about India, how all the diplomats have had to move out of India, they've been expelled. So what that means is, is that there's, for example, just a one example, IRCC has localized staff. Where they can, they understand India, the culture and and whatnot, and they can process passports, study permits, work permits and whatnot. With a localized understanding and knowledge and and can do that efficiently. Well, now they're all having to leave the country, so they have to do, have their colleagues, the case processing managers and whatnot. That might be based here in Canada or in Japan or in Australia to help pick up the slack and 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 put their attention to processing these documents. So what that does, it takes the resources away from, they might be processing study permits for international students at K to twelve, for example. Now they're not. Now they're focused on India to help accommodate for that. Others, it could be related to direct flights, you know, ability to get on an airplane, to get here safely, for example. Economic impacts, you know, the exchange rates can fluctuate significantly and can make programs much more expensive and difficult to to participate in. So those are just some of the ways that it impacts us.
With the with the diverse needs of international students. Do they need extra allocation in terms of staffing for that purpose?
Certainly, our students is part of our fees that they, for example, ELL, certainly, the the English language learning support, for sure. So that is part of the fees and so we're able to allocate the fees to offer that support to international students. They need home stays, for example, we ensure they have custodians. One of the things for elementary, they have to come with a parent, a legal guardian. But we also ask that they have a custodian as well for themselves, even at elementary. So that these custodians and responsible adults can help, not just the student, but the parent here, while they're here to 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 adapt and adjust and understand. What's happening at school or in the communities, things like that. Medical support, so we have comprehensive, make sure they have a comprehensive twenty-four seven, three sixty-five medical support. And and how to access that support. We have an emergency telephone line. We're never closed, even if the building here is closed. We have communication with our parents and students and home stays twenty-four seven, three hundred sixty-five days a week. All the students have responsible adults here and home and most have study abroad organizations as well that offer support for the students too.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I have good questions, trustee Belisa, trustee Sargent.
Yeah, thank you very much. You know, when we began this journey so long ago. It was for the cultural understandings, the sharing of knowledge and creating a world that was more understanding. And I think over the years, we've we've tried to keep that at the forefront. I really like what you're saying. And every year you come and and I'm looking for that, I'm looking for, we're not. I regret that unfortunately, over the past ten, twelve, fifteen years. Public education has been underfunded. And we use and everybody expects us to use international revenue. And really, it's honestly, it's not right. That's not why we started it. That's not why we invested every month, every year as a board. It was because of those things that you're talking about. And instead we go, okay, we need the revenue, we need the revenue. And and I think, you know, we all have to remember that we should always never forget that. And I think we all, as a system, have to change that way. And I think we all as a system have to change that way of thinking. This is not a revenue generator. This is for a much deeper, meaningful purpose. And I think we are, our students and our staff get so much from this program. It's not, it's a mutual understanding together. And I saw Dixon Dragons on, maybe it's Insta, one of the social media, and I saw the pictures. And I was like, oh my gosh, I wish I was there because that dance is so powerful. And just, it was just a reminder to me, especially in the world right now, we need to come together more. Districts, cities, everybody needs to have these programs so that we can learn from each other and love each other more. So quite deep I am, but I think more than ever, I really appreciate how you're, you're coming across keeping that focus on the student and talking, listening to trustee Hamaguchi. We do every budget time talk about, you know, what is the max, you know, because we want to keep that core. We want to make sure that the little ones that are coming here are getting a really cool experience. And so anyways, just more of a soapbox thing, but I really, really appreciated your reporting out tonight and I look forward to our discussions at budget time.
Thank you. Yes.
So, yes, thank you. Trustee Sergeant's comments. Thank you for your report and we can certainly tell that you're passionate about the program. And, and we're so thankful that, you know, the numbers are building back up again. And the international students and including our students and staff can, can learn from each other. So thank you so much for the presentation tonight. Really appreciate it and very sorry to hear about you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we're moving on to the another capital bylaw. So the, we have a report and recommendation from our secretary treasurer, Cindy Wang. So if you can give your report and then we'll move on.
Yeah, thank you, Chairperson. So my report is on page 21 of the public meeting package and the capital bylaw is on page 22 of the package. For the 2325, a five-year capital plan, the Ministry of Education and Childcare recently approved the two additional major capital projects to expand Brickhouse and Cook Elementary Schools to accommodate the student enrollment growth in the city center area. These two projects will add approximately 11 more classrooms and creates 270, more than 270 seats in these two schools. According to the section 143 of the School Act, the Board of Education is required to adopt a single capital bylaw for the approved capital plan. So therefore it is recommended that the board approve and adopt Capital Bylaw Number 2324-CPSD38-03 by way of three readings in today's public board meeting. Thank you, Chairperson.
Okay. Oh. We have the recommendation that the capital project bylaw number 2324 CPSD3803 be approved by the way of three readings and adopted. Do I have a unanimous agreement that three readings of 2324 capital bylaw take place this night? Seeing an indication that we can go ahead, I'll now read the first reading of the bylaw in full. A bylaw by the Board of Education, Rich, of School District Number 38 Richmond, Heron After called the board to adopt a capital plan of the board pursuant to sections 143 two and 144.1 of the School Act. Whereas in accordance with provisions of the School Act, the Minister of Education, Heron After called the minister, has approved the capital plan of the board. Now therefore the board agrees to the following. Authorize the Secretary Treasurer to execute project agreements related to the expenditures contemplated by the capital plan. Upon approval, to proceed to commence the project and proceed diligently and use its best efforts to complete each project substantially as directed by the minister. Observe and comply with any order, regulation or policy of the minister as may be applicable to the board or the project and maintain proper books of account and other information and documents with respect to the affairs of the projects as may be prescribed by the minister. Now therefore the board enacts the following, the capital bylaw of the board for the 2003, 2000, 2023, 24 capital plan as approved by the minister to include the supported projects specified in the letter addressed to the Secretary Treasurer and Superintendent dated March 9th, 2023 is hereby adopted. And this bylaw may be cited as School District Number 38 Richmond Capital Bylaw Number 202324 CPSD3803. So I'm looking for a mover and a seconder, trustee Beliza and trustee Hamaguchi. I'm going to call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? The motion is carried. The first reading is carried. I'll now read the second reading of the bylaw in summary. That the Board of Education approved Capital Bylaw Number 202324 CPSD38-03. Through the bylaw, the board agrees to authorize the Secretary Treasurer to execute the project agreement and commence and proceed the approved projects and comply with all applicable laws, regulations and ministry policies. And I'm looking for a mover and seconder, trustee Yang and trustee Sergeant. Are there any questions or discussion? You have a question, trustee Yang?
Just a comment. I'm certainly glad to hear this good news because, you know, can see in the proposal, we're getting six classrooms for Brickhouse Elementary as well as five classrooms for Brick Elementary, which is certainly good news in terms of alleviating enrollment pressures in our growing community in that part of the city. And that's exactly what we've called for all along in our advocacy. I'll caveat that by saying that the city center will continue to grow. If you look out in, in our neighborhood right now, we have condos that are just popping up left, right and center. And so I, I, I think modular upgrades are, and expansions are great, but the long-term focus will still have to be, you know, securing a site and getting constructions, shovels in the ground for a new school in the city center. And I'm sure that each and every one of us will remind our MLAs of that the next time we sit down together.
And actually, our superintendent did have a discussion with the Assistant Deputy, Deputy Minister who said that they are ready and willing to assist us when we are ready, but the challenge is the site. And we have been working with the city and hopefully we can identify a site, but it's pretty slim pickings out there. So we'll, we'll continue to work on it, but thank you. Yes, it's a pressure that we all are feeling. So is there any more discussion? Cause I'm going to call the question. So we had a mover and a seconder, so I'm going to call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? The second reading is carried. And I'll now read the third reading of the bylaw in summary. That the Board of Education Richmond approved Capital Bylaw Number 2324 CPSD38-03. Through the bylaw, the board agrees to authorize the Secretary Treasurer to execute the project agreement and commence and proceed the approved projects and comply with applicable laws, regulations and ministry policies. And I have a mover and seconder for the third reading, trustee Larson and trustee Wong. Is there any questions or discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor? None opposed? The third reading is carried. That's the final reading. And so the capital bylaw 202324 CPSD38-03 is therefore approved. So thank you very much, trustees and those in the gallery and online for your patience. Thank you. So the next item on our agenda is the public consultation regarding the land disposal to the city of Richmond. And this is for Canby and Number 5 Road and we have a more secretary. Ms. Wang.
Thank you, Chairperson. So this report is to, is to provide an update on the public consultation relating to the land disposition from the board to the city of Richmond to support the intersection enhancement project at Number 5 and Canby Road to improve the safety and traffic flow through the intersection. Implementation of the project will require a property disposition by the board of 173 square meters from the Mitchell Elementary School site along the Canby Road. The purpose of the public consultation is to provide an opportunity for the public to learn more, ask questions and provide feedback regarding the land disposition. The disposition is subject to approval by the ministry as well as the adoption of a bylaw by the board. Regarding the public consultation process, the board opened the consultation on Monday, October 5th by providing relevant information and advertisement on the district's website. The board also invited the community members to submit questions or input from October 5th to October 23rd. And this report is being provided to the board with a summary of the consultation process informing the board's final decision. During the public consultation process, one written submission was received from the city of Richmond to express their support for the proposed land disposal in order to implement the project. So the letter from the city stated that the project aims to enhance safety and reduce congestion in congestion in the intersection area. And it was initiated based on a public request and will benefit road users by improving safety accessibility for pedestrians and cyclists. The city plans to complete the project in 2024. The city is also committed to working closely with the school district and the public to mitigate the construction impacts on the school's operations, including using appropriate detour routes, prioritizing pedestrian safety and connectivity and clear communications about upcoming construction work. So the design efforts have been taken to minimize construction impacts to the, to the school district's property. Existing infrastructure will be restored. Impacted, that's, that's going to be impacted, will be restored within the new property boundary at no cost to the school district. So that's my report. Back to you and, and I welcome any questions from the trustees.
Any questions from trustees? Trustee Yang.
Thank you, Chairperson, and thank you to the Secretary Treasurer for preparing this public consultation. I think it's in accordance with our policy and just wanted to thank you for committing to that and to transparency to the public. I, I, I frequent this area quite a lot, so I, I'm just wondering if the city has any plans or, yeah, any plans for the mature trees on site? Because I believe there are a number of them in the air, in the land that's at hand.
I don't have the answer top of my head, so I will have to get the answer from the city and.
We can just, we could bring that up at council board liaison.
Certainly.
Thank you. Okay. Trustee Beliza, did I see her?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I I'm, I agree with the, with the use because it's intended for public use, public safety and, and public interest. My question, I think, with regard to the report. This road dedication is subject to approval of the ministry. So I, what I'd like to know is how much is the value of the, the property in terms of compensation by the city? And what would be the status of the fund that we can generate from this? Because I think there are properties that it could be designated as solely owned by the district. And that is something that, and the other one I think is, is subject to the ministry or ministry approval. I don't know if I'm correct in that regard.
Yeah, through the chair. Thank you, trustee Beliza, for your question. The, the 173 square meters land is, we, we have gone through a market, fair market, market value evaluation. So the fair market value is around $400,000 and that will be incorporated in the sales agreement between the board and the city. So that's one. Number two is any proceeds generated from disposition, board property disposition. The proceeds has to be according to the ministry's requirement and the financial reporting requirement, a policy. We have to keep the proceeds in the local capital reserves and the funds will be used for future board-approved capital projects.
And it doesn't need approval from the ministry for the use of that local capital reserve?
No.
Thank you. Thank you.
So I have a question. Thank you. Well, I just want to say I think it's money well spent because Number 5 in Canby, I think if you were to look at the stats, it's one of the most frequented by accidents and unsafety in DC. And so I, I know that back in the day when we were doing traffic safety as a parent, it was the worst intersection. And I know it still is and the, the, the public really was advocating really hard to make sure that that intersection becomes safer. So for me personally, there's nobody, you know, good money spent to create safety. And these, this is right in and around our, our school and also our continuing ed department, which we've also increased the traffic there. So I think it's due diligence that we also make sure that that area is as safe as possible. And if we have to give a little piece of land, I know the public would be on side with that. So I feel confident. Trustee Hamaguchi and then I have trustee Wong.
Um, the changes here and the, the land that's being moved over to the city, it's not going to impact any of the buildings that we've done or any of the renovations. Like it's just totally, okay, great. Thank you.
Trustee Wong.
Well, my question is that after November 21st, so our district is connected, so how many feedbacks from the public? So, so far we've only received the one written submission from the city of Richmond. Thank you.
And so are we waiting for approval from the ministry then?
Correct.
And then so once we have that, then the recommendation?
Will come to the board for bylaw.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Any more questions on this one? I lost my agenda. Hey, looking at the agenda, it is another opportunity for questions from the public. And I'm seeing a no from the Children's Teachers Association president. Are there any online questions? All right, thank you. And standing committee reports, audit committee, Chairperson Hamaguchi, or I mean, sorry. Trustee Yang, Chairperson.
Thank you, Chairperson. The next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, January 9th of next year.
Thank you. And education committee?
Thank you. Next meeting is Wednesday, November 15th at 6 o'clock.
And facilities and building now.
Next meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, November 1st at 4:30. Next meeting scheduled for Wednesday, November the first, uh, at four thirty.
What's the last? Of my agenda? Facilities and building, sorry, you're with me.
It's finance and legal, if you want me.
Yes, finance and legal.
Thank you. Um, I'm gonna go right to the recommendation and I'll move the recommendation that whereas the Board of Education School District Thirty-eight is paying for expenses incurred by the trustees in the discharge of their duties, be it resolved that in accordance with the School Act, the Board of Education School District Thirty-eight approves trustees' expenses paid during the three-month period ended September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three in the amount of three thousand nine hundred and nineteen dollars and seven cents.
I'm looking for a seconder, trustee Yang? There any questions, uh, trustee Beliza?
No, I am, I'd like to second the.
Oh.
Being a member of the committee, I'd like to second that.
Trustee Yang beat you to it. Um, so if there's no more questions, I will call the question. All, did you have a question? Oh, call the question, all those in favor? Opposed, motions carried, thank you.
And chair, our next meeting will be Wednesday, November fifteenth at ten a.m.
And policy committee, uh, there's minutes of a meeting held uh, September eighteenth are attached for information. And a meeting was held on Monday, October sixteenth. And thank you to the vice chair, trustee Larson, for taking over from me while I was away. And, uh, there is, and the next meeting is scheduled Tuesday, November fourteenth at eleven a.m. Uh, public is welcome. Board committee and representative reports, uh, council board liaison committee, the next meeting is scheduled November fifteenth. And we are collecting agenda items as we speak. And, uh, B.C. School Trustees Association, there was a provincial council meeting. I think trustee Larson, who is our provincial councillor, will update us on that. And then also advocacy day as well from trustee Sergeant, who attended on my behalf.
Um, we had presentations from the Matee Nation, uh, K to twelve reporting and improving student learning outcomes, data, data presentation, very, very well done, all, all three. And there were three motions that were passed, um, after much debate. Um, support for youth mental health, pay equity supplement advocacy, and request for the education minister's support for equity, diversity, and inclusion. The last one was, there was much addition to it. Um, and there'll be, if they're not on the hub yet, they will be soon. So it was, um, very, very good.
Thank you, and thanks for attending. And, uh, trustee Sergeant attended the advocacy day. I was unable to pick it because I was sick, so my appreciation to, uh, trustee Sergeant for, um, taking over from me and traveling to Victoria. And taking the time out of her busy schedule to do that. So, uh, you want to report on the advocacy day, which I understand was a big success.
Yeah, thank you, um, chair to Blotney. Yeah, just a quick, uh, kind of overview of the day. BCSDA, our provincial association, organized a provincial advocacy day. And it was held in Victoria and was the first time that's ever been done. And from my perspective, I thought it was very worthwhile. All board chairs from across the province met in Victoria. And we spoke about our common goals. And those goals were, um, put together through all the motions that were made in the last couple of years. And the goals, uh, were capital and deferred maintenance, uh, student outcomes, youth and Karen indigenous results, and then recruitment and retention. So those are the top three things that our association is working on, but it is very relevant to local districts as well. So we actually went to the legislature and we watched question period. And after question period, we, all the board chairs went over to the hotel and the MLAs came over who, who had time and had lunch with us. And we, um, sat in our local groups as well as other MLAs joined us. And we talked about our local issues, what those were, and how they might be able to help, um, move those along. We, um, were also given an advocacy tips and advice. And on the hub, the CSDA hub, they have more tips on advocacy because it certainly isn't just writing a letter. And, uh, the tips for the day were really, um, creating a relationship with your, and understanding the ask that they get and looking for ways to maybe go about it a bit different. But I really appreciated sitting with a couple of our local MLAs and talking about the issues. Uh, lots of suggestions came from that discussion, which I've shared with the board. And then we did have an incredible presentation by Carol James, who was the past president of BCSDA, but also a MLA. And it was absolutely outstanding. And she was giving, uh, she spoke about the importance of public education and why we need to, you know, keep advocating for education. And she was giving us tips and suggestions about, um, what an MLA's life is like and the ask that they get and how we can go about in very proactive ways, making sure that public education is, is way up there. And she was sharing, of course, an election is coming and, uh, that we should all be prepared to make sure that all MLA candidates are talking about education. So I know our association will be looking for ways to highlight that. But it definitely, um, and there's been lots of social media about the meeting. Just that all, everyone came together to advocate for common goals and for the MLAs to see that we are a joint group. And, uh, we're gonna push forward with these, uh, three topics for sure. So it was, uh, very worthwhile from my perspective and thank you. I'm sorry that you were ill, but I really appreciated going. And, uh, I really think it, it will probably happen again. Uh, but they were really telling us to keep up with building that relationship, not just once a year, just building it as common politicians and making sure we both have the same. If you had any questions or anything like that, I really think, uh, the tips and advice about advocacy. And then BCSDA is also, uh, created in, uh, what is advocacy and what it looks like? It's about five pages. Um, so just go in the hub and have a look. So, thank you very much.
Thanks for attending.
Thanks.
Um, I was sorry to miss it, but, uh, I knew that it was well looked after. Any questions for trustee Sergeant? Oh, sorry, trustee Wong.
I think that this year is really special. We have so many relationship and communication with the city councillor and MLA. Is that right? That we, actually, we, we mixed, it's like from, uh, twenty twenty-three. So we have a good relationship, make good, uh, communication with the city councillor and, and MLA.
And our MPs too.
Yeah. It's really benefit for us to just like help them what, what the education need, what our community is good issue.
And our MLA MPs have asked, you know, they wanted to meet quarterly. I think our MLAs are really keen on it and we've expressed interest as well as councillors of meeting our.
We think, we feel they were really welcome, we asked.
Yes.
Together to talk about.
We're working on some good relationships and that's, that's really important because we are partners in education and, and, you know, our, our MPs and MLAs and councillors get a lot of, uh, questions, field a lot of questions from the public um, that are education-related too, so.
Yeah.
That's good. And we are actually talking about another meeting with our MLA, so.
Good.
Thank you. Okay. An update, all right. Um, BCPC, uh, at the moment, there's nothing, but there is an AGM coming up in January. And, uh, there's no correspondence. So, um, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn. Uh, trustee Wong and trustee Larson, all those in favor? Is there anyone opposed? No. Wow, we did it here tonight. So thank you, I just wanted to thank, uh, the people online as well. And the person in the gallery, thank you very much for attending.